January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three, City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please remember to adjust your microphones and speak into them so you can be heard clearly for our viewers at home. If anyone from our audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on our agenda, please fill out a blue card located in the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge. I'd like you to please join me in mourning the passing of, uh, past Mayor of Broussard Charlie Longley. Charlie passed in his sleep last night. He served the city as a councilman from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety, and served as Mayor of the City of Broussard from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and eighteen. Please join me in a moment of silence and send your prayers to his family. Thank you. The city will be, uh, sending out information about his, uh, the arrangements when we get them. Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
Move.
The minutes were supplied in the council's packet. Tina, do we have public discussion?
No public comments.
Do we have council discussion?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the November and December two thousand twenty-two financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Our presenter tonight is Karen Fontenot, our CFO. Welcome, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, November and December financials are in your pocket. They were also sent out via email last week. Um, with the close of December, that's half of our fiscal year gone. We have every department trending under budget with the exception of streets, water, and sewer. It's kind of the common problem. They buy the supplies. The supplies and materials are eating our lunch. Um, in addition, in December, November and December, we tend to pay two of our biggest expenses of the year, which is our insurance. Um, that increased about a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars this year alone. Um, they did the best they could, but it is what it is. I think we all saw those increases personally. Um, having said that, I do think that trend is gonna correct over the next few months. It's just an expense that eats up a lot of our current resources at one time. On the revenue side, um, sales taxes are trending twelve percent over budget. So that'll give you, if you project it out, if that trend holds, an additional eight hundred seventy thousand dollars in each of our one cent sales taxes, and four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in the recreation sales tax. Uh, these numbers are also seventeen percent above last year and thirty-seven percent ahead of the year before. So the, if I hope the trend stays up, uh, we definitely could use the additional revenue. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Any further council discussion?
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, Burton, Calder, and Brad Calder, approval of the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two audit report. Welcome, Burton and Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're gonna present here sitting, give this a shot. Uh, as you said, my dad and I are here to present the audit for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, happy to report that we do not have any management letter, internal control or compliance findings. These are things you don't wanna have in your report, and you do not have them, so that's good news. Um, with that being said, I'm gonna go over the utility fund operations, the park operations, and then my dad will go over the utility, operation of the city as a whole, as well as the balance sheet. So with that being said, why don't we flip to page seventy-one of the blue bound report? And on page seventy-one, we have the utility fund, and we have each individual department, garbage, water, and sewer. And what I'm gonna do is start with garbage on the right side of the page, and then move to sewer water and hit the totals last. So taking a look at garbage on the far right, you can see that revenues in two thousand twenty-one, a million three seventy-six, increased about forty thousand to a million four fifteen. Uh, there's not a lot of expenditures in the garbage department, as you can see. Uh, but in total, the increase about a hundred thousand dollars from a million two ninety-eight to a million three ninety-five. And you can see how that affected the bottom line. We had a profit last year of seventy-eight thousand. This year it dipped to about twenty thousand. Uh, so about sixty thousand dollar decrease in your net income. Moving on to sewer, uh, we had a nice increase in the revenues from a million seventy-one to a million two fifty-seven, about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, expenditures, uh, you can see them listed out, uh, second to last line. In total, uh, they moved from two million two ninety-seven up about eighty-five thousand to two million three eighty-two. Uh, there is some movement within the categories. Um, a couple of the bigger movers, you can see about six from the top is engineering fees. That went from about twenty-two thousand last year to about forty-two thousand. So that's twenty thousand dollar increase there. The very next line item went the other way. Uh, decreased quite a bit. Repairs and maintenance, five hundred thirty-three thousand in twenty-one, down to about four hundred thousand in twenty-two. So you save some money. Keep on moving down from there, and you get to materials and supplies, which doubled. It was a hundred and fifty-one thousand last year, so shade over three hundred and five thousand in the current year. Those are the three main categories that caused the change, um, in the expenditures. And then looking at the bottom, bottom line, you increased revenues one eighty-five, expenditures went up eighty-five, so your bottom line improved by about a hundred thousand. Last year you lost a million two twenty-five. You improved to a loss of one million one twenty-five. So still a loss, but moving in the right direction. Moving on to water, you had a substantial increase in the revenues here. Uh, a little over two million dollars of revenues in twenty-one, almost two point six million dollars in two thousand twenty-two, about five hundred thirty-five thousand dollar increase year over year. The other side of the coin is the expenditures pretty much increased by the exact same amount. Two million six oh six last year, three million one thirty-six, for a total of about five hundred and thirty thousand. So you, you made a lot more money, but it costs a lot more money to make that money. Um, and similar to what we saw with sewer, look at the sixth line from the top is engineering fees. Look at the increase in water. Twenty-three thousand spent last year, a little over two hundred and fifty-two thousand in two thousand twenty-two. Right below that, repairs and maintenance, eighty-two thousand last year, up to a hundred and forty-four thousand in the current year. And then a few more down from there, materials and supplies, here again, quite the increase, two hundred and forty-four thousand up to four hundred and seventy-seven. Karen kinda commented that on that in her opening statement, that the cost of things is quite a bit more, and you can see it here, the utility fund is, is also true. Uh, looking at the bottom line, like we talked about, the revenues and expenditures increased by approximately the same amount, and you can see the effect on the bottom line, is the bottom line is very similar. You had a loss last year of five hundred seventy-one thousand, this year a loss of five hundred sixty-five thousand, so not much change, a slight improvement, uh, in the water department. Bringing everything together, you can see total revenues, four million four eighty-three, up about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars to five million two forty-three. So a nice increase in the revenues. The other side of the coin is taking a look at the expenditures. Six million two oh two, increase of about seven hundred and ten thousand to six point nine million. And you can see the operating loss we have. Last year was one point seven million, this year one million six sixty-nine. So we did improve, the loss decreased by approximately fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's just with the cost of some of the things that, um, like materials and supplies and engineering fees, it, uh, it hits you from the expenditure standpoint. One thing I do wanna point out is toward the middle of the page, really the bottom, uh, middle of the page, is depreciation and depreciation right-of-use assets. I wanna point this out because we wanna take a look at how we're doing from also not only from a cash standpoint, I'm sorry, from an operation standpoint, but also a cash standpoint. So you can see operating loss of a million six sixty-nine. When you factor in approximately a million four forty of depreciation, your cash negative about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Last year, you had a loss of a million seven eighteen, depreciation of a million four seventeen, so you're approximately three hundred thousand cash negative. I'm saying that to point out while the income improved by about fifty thousand, from a cash standpoint, we improved about seventy thousand. So we're still losing cash, but we're getting closer and closer, uh, to being breakeven, which is where we'd like to see the utility fund at some point, and we're moving in that direction. Any questions about page seventy-one?
Brad, just wanna make one comment. Underwater, um, we have some repay from the state of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Karen, would you like to, could you explain that a little better, please?
So the reason the water engineering fees went up so much is because we had to pay one hundred, it was a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in engineering fees to relocate the water lines at Highway ninety. The state has agreed to reimburse us, however, that revenue is shown outside of the departmental income and expenses. So it's actually in the non-operating section, so you don't see the offset here, but we do have a reimbursement within the fund.
Right, so we will see a, a hundred eighty thousand dollar income for that line item in another part of, you know, of this, uh, of this report.
Correct.
Okay, with that being said about page seventy-one, why don't we flip to page two of the handout? And page two is your per customer per month. It's not in the blue book. It's, it should be a separate insert you guys have. And page two. We'll do a similar approach to what we just did. We'll look at water, sewer, and garbage, and we'll conclude with the totals. Um, take a look at water. You can see you have nineteen through twenty-two. Uh, the top line is customers. You're increasing about two hundred customers a year over the past four years. You can see back in nineteen, five thousand two sixty-nine, this year up to five thousand eight eighty-nine, so roughly two hundred, uh, customers per year. Next section is service income and connection income, and then we get to total income. So I'm gonna concentrate on that third total income and kind of the trend that we're seeing. You can see back in nineteen and twenty, roughly twenty-eight dollars per customer. Then in twenty-one, we jumped to thirty, and then a healthy increase, which we saw in the audit report, to thirty-six dollars, okay? Then you look at operating expenditures, running between thirty-seven and thirty-eight, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we had the large increase in the current year to forty-four dollars. And you can see operating losses all three years, but look at the trend that we have. We were at nine sixty, nine sixty-three back in nineteen, then down to eight thirty-four, eight twenty-six, and with eight dollars in the current year. So you can see that trend, that we're trending in the right direction. We then add back depreciation, we get to the line, operating income or loss without depreciation. Another way to look at that is cash. Are we generating or losing cash within each department or the utility fund as a whole? In this case, in the water department, you're losing in the current year a dollar seventy-six per customer per month in cash. Last year was a dollar ninety-two, year before that, two twenty, year before that, three twenty-eight. So you can see the trend, that number's getting smaller, which is we'd like to get it close to hopefully a positive number at some point, or at least breakeven, but we're moving in that direction. Now moving on to sewer, you're increasing your sewer customers by a similar rate to water, roughly two hundred per year from nineteen through twenty-two. Then you have your service income, connections, getting to total income. And you see total income in nineteen and twenty, virtually the same number, sixteen dollars and change. Then you have a nice increase to twenty dollars last year, and then twenty-two dollars and change in the current year. Look at the control over the expenditures in sewer department, though. Forty-two fourteen back in nineteen, there's a, bounces a little bit between twenty and twenty-one, but forty-two ninety-seven, so over a four-year span, you're talking about less than a dollar increase in your operating expenditures in sewer. This tells me that it's not an expenditure problem in sewer, it's a revenue problem, because your expenditures are very stable, even considering inflation that we had this past year. You can see the operating losses each year, uh, range it between twenty-eight and twenty, twenty being the lowest year, which is this year. Uh, we add back between seventeen and eighteen dollars of depreciation all four years, and you can see in the current year, you have a cash loss of three dollars and seven cents, which is better than last year when you lost four eighty-five, and a lot better than twenty when you lost ten dollars and change. So here again, we're trending in the right direction. You have a question, ma'am? Oh, I just saw it light up. I thought you had a question, sorry. So like I said, in sewer, we're trending in the right direction like we are in water. In garbage is a little bit more straightforward. You're increasing probably at a rate about a hundred and fifty customers thereabout per month, nineteen through twenty-two. Uh, you can see we have service income, a minimum amount of connection charges, total income, twenty-one dollars back in nineteen, twenty-three and change, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, so not much change in your income here. And you can see bottom line, there's no depreciation here, so we just go straight to the bottom line. You're actually generating cash of thirty-three cents this year, last year a dollar thirty-six, year before that, two eighty-five. So garbage is, uh, generating a little bit of cash for you. Then we move on to the totals in the bottom right-hand side of the page. Uh, you can see service income, then we add connections and total income. Back in nineteen, it represented sixty-five dollars and forty cents of income to the city. Another way to look at this, this is the average bill a citizen or business would have paid within the City of Broussard. That number moved to sixty-seven, eighty-six, and twenty, then up to seventy-three, ninety-six, and twenty-one, and eighty-two, sixty-six, and twenty-two. Look at the expenditures, they really haven't increased that much, about ten percent over four years. And when you consider the last year that we had, that's really not that bad. So again, I don't think it's an expenditure problem. I think we need to bring in more revenues. I know you're aware of that. A hundred dollars back in nineteen, up to one oh one, then one oh three, with a hundred and ten dollars and change in the current year. Operating losses all four years, but you can see the trend that went on downward, as I've mentioned several times, thirty-four sixty back in nineteen, went down to twenty-seven ninety-six in the current year. Add back between twenty-three and twenty-four dollars of depreciation, and you can see we lost four dollars and fifty cents per customer per month in the current year. It's better than last year, it was five forty-one, better than two thousand twenty, it was nine seventy-seven. There's a few new council members here tonight, and so what I did, and you don't have this in front of you, I went ahead and pulled this. I keep saying that we're trending in the right direction, and you might say, well, where do, where are we coming from? So back in thirteen, the bottom right-hand cut, uh, part of the page, you were losing forty dollars per customer per month, okay? In fourteen, it improved to thirty-one dollars, and in two thousand fifteen, you lost thirty-five dollars. You guys don't have this. I printed this before the meeting, 'cause I wanted to give you an idea, 'cause y'all are new, 'cause I've, some of them have been hearing me say this for many years, the improvement we're making. I wanted to give you all some context of how much of an improvement the city has made over these years. Like I said, back in fifteen, you lost thirty-five dollars per customer per month. This year you lost a little less than five. So you're talking about a thirty-dollar improvement over that seven-year span thereabout. Just wanted to give you some context for how much of an improvement you guys have seen over this span of time.
Which y'all have been doing, or what the council has been doing here, is they've been, every year in the budget, they've been forecasting an increase in the rates to bring the rates up, because as Brad pointed out, it's a rate problem. And we, we've mentioned that years ago, and, uh, of course, that's been implemented. Basically, almost screwed it. We're getting close to where we should be, and the, the goal is not to be losing any money when we back then to the future.
Any questions about what I went over on page seventy-one in the blue book, or what I just went over in the per cousin per month? Okay, if we could now, let's take a brief look on page seventy-three in the audit report, and I wanna take a look at the Park and Recreation Fund. Page seventy-three. Page seventy-three. And you'll see the theme kind of as I go through and compare twenty-one to twenty-two in the park fund, that things are extremely comparable year over year. Uh, and we can start by just looking at the operating revenues. In two thousand twenty-one, roughly seven hundred eleven thousand of revenues, seven hundred thirteen thousand in the current year. You're talking about less than three thousand dollar difference in revenues year over year. You have quite a bit of expenditures listed out in front of you. There is some variance between categories, but look at how close the complex is in total. Two million five seventy-seven in twenty-one, two million five eighty-four in two thousand twenty-two. So roughly, almost two point six million, you're talking about seven thousand dollar variance. Um, so there's very little variance in the expenditures here. Same thing for Arsenal Park. Thirty-four thousand spent roughly in twenty-one, roughly thirty-eight thousand in twenty-two, about four thousand variance there. So total loss, loss from operations in two thousand twenty-one was one point nine million. Loss from operations in the current year, one million nine oh nine, so about a nine thousand dollar change year over year, so it's very, very comparable. Then we move on to non-operating revenues or expenditures. You can see what makes that up is interest, income, interest, expense, um, and some debt issuance costs you had. In total for this section was about a million dollars last year, a million fifty-six in the current year. The loss before capital contributions and transfers, two point nine million, both in twenty-one and twenty-two. Minimum amount of co- uh, capital contributions, and then you get your transfer from the two thousand eleven sales tax, okay? Two point four million last year, almost two point seven million this year. Frame of reference, this sales tax brought in roughly three point four million in two thousand twenty-two. So you're transfer, transferring the majority of the revenues from that sales tax. And the third to last line, and you get to changing that position, a loss of two hundred and seventy-nine, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Last year was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. As I pointed out, the utility fund, if you go back to the St. Junior Sports Complex expenditures, the third to last expense is depreciation. It was nine hundred forty-eight thousand last year, nine fifty-six in the current year. So when you take a look at the park and you factor in all the debt and the sales tax, and you add back depreciation, it's actually cash positive by approximately six to seven hundred thousand dollars. It's not necessarily all apparent from this page, but I'd like to point it out, 'cause you can't just look at the park and say, okay, we're losing X amount of dollars. Yeah, you are, but you have a dedicated source, being the two thousand eleven sales tax, and you're transferring a lot of that money in. And so when you factor that all together, it looks maybe bad from an operations, operation standpoint from a million nine. When you factor in the sales tax, it's actually pretty healthy in generating cash when you include the sales tax. Kind of a mouthful there. Any questions about page seventy-three? If there's no question on seventy-three, I'm gonna turn it over to my father, and he's gonna cover the operation of the city from an operations and from a balance sheet standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, let's look at page one of the handout. That's, that's not bound in the book, the blue book. Um, all that went to Baton Rouge, which is required, is what's in the blue book. We have to send this report every year to, uh, the Legislative Auditor's Office, and it's due within six months of the fiscal year end. So it's due in, um, in December, December thirty-one. Everyone has that handout or not? Jeff, you don't have yours?
Jeff.
Yeah. You got it? Okay. Pa- page one of the handout, what this page does, it takes eighty-one pages that's in the blue bound book, and we kinda putting it together on a one page, so you can see, well, how did we compare to our budget that we, we amended and adopted? And, and what was the actual numbers, and what were the numbers, and I've given you three additional prior years, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one on the far right. I'm gonna focus more on, on the budget and the actual, as well as we can look at actual for last year. But tax revenues, which is sales taxes and franchise taxes, of course, the City of Broussard has no property taxes. Uh, that was eliminated a number of years ago, and we only have the sales tax. So the tax revenues were budgeted at eighteen point five million, they came in at nineteen million thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen thousand more than what was anticipated in the amended budget. I look at last year's number, it was seventeen point six million, so we're up about a million, um, seven, well, about a million four hundred thousand dollars over the prior year, and look at twenty, was fifteen point two million, we're up two point four million dollars over the prior year. On the licenses and permits, the next category, very close, you budgeted one point eight million dollars of revenues, actually brought in one point nine million, eighty-four thousand more than you thought. Last year was a million nine, so very close to the prior year. Intergovernmental revenues, it's state grants, state monies coming in, um, or federal monies, if you do have any. Uh, intergovernmental is a million four seventy-two on the budget, came in slightly below that at a million three eighty-eight, eighty-three thousand dollars less than budget. Last year, very close, a million three thirty-eight. Utility charges for services, Brad just went over that. You had budgeted to receive four point nine million. We actually brought in five point two million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand more than what was anticipated, and the prior year number, which was shown earlier, four point four million. Parks and Recreation, just went over that. You budgeted six hundred and fifty-one thousand of revenues, came in at seven hundred and thirteen thousand. Last year was seven hundred and eleven thousand. Fines and forfeits, uh, budgeted five hundred and thirty-two thousand, came in very close to that at five hundred and twenty-two thousand six ninety-five, ninety-five hundred dollars less than what was anticipated. Last year, four hundred and ninety-six thousand. Interest income, budgeted fifty thousand two hundred, brought in fifty thousand six hundred, and last year was forty-four thousand. Miscellaneous revenue, sort of a catch-all here, three hundred and sixty thousand on the budget, brought in three hundred and forty-five thousand. That's fourteen thousand nine hundred less than what was anticipated. Last year was two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Total revenues budgeted for the City of Broussard, twenty-eight point three million dollars. Actually brought in twenty-nine point two million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars more than budget. That's great. Last year was twenty-six billion eight seventy-two. Look at the bottom, very bottom of the page, it says revenue variance from budget. You were over by three percent, three point one three percent. The state law says you must be within five. You can't be five percent short. You should have been, your budget, where you're three percent over, so you're in great shape. So, uh, that's good. Um, looking at the expenditures, how was the money spent? These categories have to be, are dictated to us as to how, so that, how they have to be categorized, and, and all cities, if you look at it, are gonna show these same sort of categories. Administration for general government, you budgeted two point four million, spent two million five fifty-nine, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand more than what was anticipated. Last year was two million six sixty. Economic development, very close here. You budgeted four hundred and ten thousand, spent four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven thousand more than we thought. Last year was three hundred and forty thousand. Public safety, first of all, for the police department, budgeted three point eight million, spent three, three million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh, that's eleven thousand less than what was anticipated. Now, this is just the operations of the police department. Last year was three million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Fire department, a million five fifty, was budgeted, spent a million five thirty-three. Last year was a million four sixteen. Streets and drainage, budgeted three million four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Look at this number, three million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Four thousand four hundred dollars off a budget, or, uh, more than budget on a three point five million dollar budget. That's very, very close. Culture and recreation, budgeted eighteen thousand, spent eighteen thousand. Uh, utility fund expenses, Brad just talked about those. You budgeted six billion eight thirty-four. You actually spent six billion nine thirteen. Last year was six million one eighty-three. A lot of the increases, as we pointed out, was in the supplies and the repairs areas. Parks and Rec, two point six million on the budget, spent two million six hundred and twenty-two thousand, forty-two thousand less than we thought, and last year was two point six million. On the debt service, budgeted million two fifty-six, spent in principle a million two fourteen, forty-three thousand less than budget here. Um, on the interest and, and fiscal charges, we budgeted five eighty-five, and that one came in at six sixteen, thirty thousand more than we thought, but you should look at the two together. It's a net of a positive twelve thousand dollars. Now, the big number here is capital outlay next. You budgeted to spend in capital, and there was a lot of street capital outlay, seven point one, uh, seven million two hundred thousand dollars, actually spent six point nine million dollars, and that's two hundred and seventy-one thousand less than you thought. Uh, last year was two point two million on the capital. Total expenditures were budgeted for the city at thirty million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. You actually spent thirty million sixty-two thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less than budget. And look at the very last line item on the page, expenditure variance from budget. We came in at point four one percent off a budget, less than budget. That's extremely close, guys. Again, you should be within five percent. Uh, you can't hardly get it any closer than this on a thirty million dollar budget. So, uh, y'all should be commended, did a great job there, the, uh, council, the administration, and the mayor, in getting it this close. Uh, excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures. At this line item, you were anticipating having a deficit, and in two years, you do spend more than what you bring in, because you, you serve in the public, and you spend a lot on capital. So you had anticipated having a deficit. And you spend a lot on capital. So you had anticipated having a deficit at this line item of a million eight twenty eight. It came in at eight hundred and seventeen thousand, a million dollars better than what, what you thought. Last year was two point five million dollar positive at this line item. Other financing sources, you had some proceeds from some leases, five hundred and seventy, five hundred and seven thousand dollars, and that's what you had budgeted. Then going on to the bottom of the page, the other revenues, which this is mainly made up of the interest and fiscal charges on the utility debt. And that's a million ninety nine thousand dollars. And also the, the park as well, a million ninety nine thousand. So the net other expenses is eight forty. Bottom, bottom line, you had anticipating having a deficit of two million three hundred and ninety four thousand dollars for the city on a thirty million dollar budget. Came in a lot better than that. Came in at a million one forty nine, one point two million dollars less than what was anticipated on the deficiency for the year. You can see last year, we had a surplus of a million six fifty two. Any questions on this page? And again, this is bringing everything together from all of the different funds of the city that you have and putting it on one page. Because other than that, I'd have had to flip through about six pages in this report to try and get you there, and you'd have looked at only certain funds at, at a particular time. If I don't have any questions, what I'd like to do is for you to go to page three of the handout. And even though we showed a deficit for the year, we want to then look at this and take out the extraordinary income that we got and the extra expended, expenditure, expenditures that we had relative to capital items. And we have four years presented here. So let's look at, at the final column or the fourth column, and, and that's year twenty two. We started it with that one million one hundred and forty nine thousand dollar deficit. To that, we got, well, from that, we're going to subtract any grants that we got. We got grant monies, we got L C D B G monies, state grants, debt issuance from the, from the issuances of the, of the leases, and that's five hundred thousand. In, in total, though, it's a million two sixty nine that we're going to remove out of that because that's revenues that we showed that we got, that may be just a one time type of thing. They're not recurring. But then with that, I'm going to add back the capital outlay. And if you remember, it was six point nine million dollars. See, six million nine twenty one. We're kind of breaking it out by the different funds. And look at what your operating surplus was. When you take out the extra revenues that you got, remove the extra extraordinary expenses, we had a surplus last year, the highest of the four years presented, of four million five hundred and one thousand dollars. That's phenomenal. Last year was three point six million. Year before that was nine hundred and forty eight thousand, and the year before that was two point two million dollars. So basically, this is the four years of the previous administration. They did fantastic. Because our surplus was four and a half plus three, you could say three point six, that's about eight million, eight and a half million, another nine hundred, that's, that's nine million plus two. So about twelve and a half million dollars of surplus was generated during the previous term or the previous administration. So just to let y'all know, that's, that's great. That's fantastic. But when you look at it, you say, man, we had a million dollar deficit. But when you really look at the whole situation, no, we did not. Any questions on this? And hopefully I'm clear on what the way I presented it to you. Okay? Hearing no questions, what I'd like to do is, we just went over the operations, Brad and I, of this past year. What I'd like to do at the final conclusion thing here is on page fifty eight of the bound audit report. Let's look at page fifty eight, and this is, as we refer to it in business terms, a balance sheet. It's what assets, cash and, and whatever assets you have, fixed assets as well, and what the city has. And then what's the debts that we have, and what's the remaining amount? In other words, if, as of June thirtieth, the end of the fiscal year, how did we stand? And I'm going to focus on the third column and the fourth column, the third column being the totals for twenty two, and the fourth column being the totals for twenty one. The cash and interest bearing deposits, look at this, was twelve point seven million dollars last year. We're at fifteen million dollars this year. Again, I just said we had, we had an operational surplus for the year when you take it all into consideration. Receivables that were owed to the city was two point six million this year versus three point eight million last year. And due from other governments was eight hundred and eighty eight thousand versus six hundred and sixty two thousand. And then you have the total current assets of the city. Last year was seventeen point five million. This year, we're at nineteen million dollars. Looking at the, what we call non-current assets, which is mainly the capital assets of the city, the land that you own, all of the assets, the book value of those assets, the lease assets, which is called now right to use assets, which is the leased assets that you have. We have to show this now. And the total non-current assets of the city were a hundred and one million dollars last year. They're a hundred and five million this year. Total assets of the city of Broussard, which is all fixed assets, all cash, all receivables, a hundred and nineteen million dollars last year. We're at a hundred and twenty five million dollars for the current year, a hundred and twenty four million eight ninety nine, to be exact. Now, that's our assets. How much debt do we owe? Current liabilities toward the bottom half of the page, in total, it was four point nine million last year, and it was seven point six million dollars for the current year. If you look up at the second line item under current liabilities, you see this deferred revenue, two point three million dollars. This is some ARPA monies that you had received that you have yet to spend. So basically, because you've gotten it, but you haven't spent it, we have to show it as, as a liability, as, till you spend it. The government sent it to you. So that's not even factored into this. And then you have another payment that came in in September of this year, the second half. It was in two, two installments or two tranches, as they called it. So I wanted to point that out to you. That's still available. Non-current liabilities, which is all the bonds and everything, it was forty four million last year, we're down to forty two million. Total debts of the city of Broussard, towards the bottom half of the page, total liabilities were forty nine point four million last year. We're at forty nine point seven million for the current year. And that does include that two point three million that is yet to be spent, that we, we do have it. What I want to point out is, towards the bottom of the page, the very last line item says net position. That's your net surplus. If we could liquidate everything in cash, you would end up, or the citizens of this city would end up with seventy six million dollars in cash. Last year was seventy one million. Obviously, we don't have seventy six million. I just told you how much we had. We have reinvested all this. This administration or previous administrations has invested back into the infrastructure of this city, sixty five million dollars. But what we do have is what's restricted for sales tax dedications and, and for external, which is the sales tax dedication for St. Martin Parish of two point eight million. And in total, you don't have this, but I'm, I'm adding these numbers up. And so I can give you the final, you have basically nine million dollars that's available to be used. That's not segregated for bond restrictions or whatever restrictions that's available. You're spending, as we said, thirty million dollars a year, okay? But I take out the capital, you're actually spending about twenty four million dollars to operate this city on an annual basis. And as I said, you have nine million dollars in surplus, and it's liquid. You have it in cash. So how many months or how many days do we have available should we have a catastrophic event? And that number, excuse me, it's four and a half months. You have four and a half months of surplus overall for this city that's available to you to operate without taking in a dime. We have enough surplus to operate for almost five months. You should have at least two months, okay? So the higher, the better. We also look at your general fund, because the general fund, if, if you can't spend it in a certain way, generally, the general fund can be used to spend monies. How, how cer, how secure and how strong is your general fund? Yours is very strong. You have about two hundred and twenty five days or seven and a half months available in general fund for, based upon the expenditures that you're spending in the general. So we have, you're in a very healthy position, even though you did spend almost seven million dollars in capital expenditures this past year. So my, my recommendation is keep up the good work. You're doing good relative to budget. You have in a surplus, and you have plenty to operate on. So keep up what y'all are doing, and I think you'll be fine. Any questions? Hearing none, we'd like to, of course, thank the mayor and the council and the help of the administration in us conducting this audit and allowing us to serve the people of Broussard with the audit. We have, you have to have this done on an annual basis. And we appreciate your business. I want to say that. Thank you.
Bernard and Brad, thank you for doing an excellent job, as always. Karen, good work on keeping the city running correctly on our financials. I apologize. It is set up for an approval, so we need a council motion for approval and vote.
I'll second.
Question?
District four, yes. District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thanks again.
Ordinances for introduction. Item five point one, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, three. An ordinance annexing certain properties located in section ninety three, township ten south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, known as the Bill Finger Incorporated at five, ten La Flamm Road in voting district one. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The maps were supplied in the council's packet. This is the introductory ordinance only. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question. District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four? Yes. Motion carries.
Item five point two, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, four. An ordinance annexing certain properties located in the eastern side of Youngsville Highway, LA Highway eighty nine, in section sixty, township ten south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, known as the S J C Properties LLC at twelve oh one and twelve oh three Youngsville Highway in voting district three. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Second.
The map, this map was also supplied in the council's packet. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question. District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point three, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, five. An ordinance annexing certain properties located on and along Western Right of Way on FOB Road in section nine, township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, at one, one, two, one, one, eight, one, two, four, and one, two, eight, FOB Road, known in, known as the Allen Prados the second, Jonah Trimble Prados, David Wesley Young, Barbara Benton Young, James Thomas DeZormo Junior, and Jean Paige DeZormo in voting district five. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Move.
Second.
Map was supplied in the council's packet. Tina, do we have any public comment? Council discussion?
Question?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Yes.
District three, I'm sorry, district four? Yes. District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Item five point four, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, six. An ordinance amending to two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three, operating budget of revenues and expenditures for five hundred seventy five thousand dollars for the water line extension on Ambassador Caffrey to Bonner Road. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Second.
So this water line, this would be a capital project for the city of Broussard. I'd like to ask Walter Meld to comment on the, the description of the project for the council, please.
This, this project will add another interconnection point with L U S along Ambassador Caffrey. There, there's a section where the golf course is that there's a gap there. So that this will bridge a gap and have a tie in around where Steins is. We currently have connection points with L U S on Highway ninety, Hart DeForm Road and Albertson's Parkway. This gives us another connection point. It gives us better system reliability, better system pressures, and, and operational flexibility.
And, and incidentally, to add to that, it is a, an interconnection with a different water system besides the one we're, we're connected to with, with L U S now, which gives us redundancy.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? Motion carries.
Item six point one, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, one. An ordinance appointing the municipal officials and naming the advertising newspaper as the official journal of the, journal of the city of Broussard and establishing regular meetings for the city council on the second and fourth Tuesday of each and every month, with the exception of the month of December, which has only one meeting on the second Tuesday, said meeting to commence at six P M. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
So Jer, this ordinance was chopped apart in a particular way last time. I think Oscar wants to comment on it. But Gerald had set it up to appear in the council's packet, just as it had appeared introduct, as the introductory ordinance. And his recommendation for the council was to make a motion to amend this ordinance to exclude the municipal officials' vote because you will see it appear in, in a resolution further down the agenda. Which means if we excluded it, you would be approving the advertising newspaper and the meeting dates and times. Gerald, Oscar, would you like to add anything to that?
No, that's basically what, what, there were some contentious issues, and we've had times to talk and discuss them. If this would be a way of getting to stuff that has not, that was not a contention at all, guess if you wanted to choose to do it that way to amend, you would just have those two things that would actually be, be voted, the rest would be removed. And like I said, it will be a, if, if you choose that way, they will be in the resolution later on.
So the council would have the option voting on this in its entirety as it sits, or if they would take, like to take up the municipal officials up separately, then we would need an amendment to carve that out, and it'll appear later in the agenda. Council discussion?
I'll make a motion that we amend this ordinance to eliminate the appointing of the mayor's department, and we'll handle it in the, down the line.
So we have a motion on and a second. We would need, we would need to go to vote, correct?
Yes.
Question. District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now the council would be discussing and move to vote when they are ready.
Only the
The newspaper?
Newspaper and
And the meeting times. Yes, sir.
Second. District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point two, ordinance number two, three dash seven, five, two. An ordinance amending zoning map D dash nine for one, four, one, four, Youngsville Highway, the Clavel property from residential to community commercial. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
This is the second time that this item comes before the council. This zoning change is at the request of the property owner. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolutions. Resolution number seven, three, seven dash two, three. A resolution appointing the members of the zoning and planning commission. Resolution number seven-three-seven dash two-three, a resolution appointing the members of the zoning and planning commission. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, if Craig and Keith are here, introduce themselves to the conference. Mr. Keith Russo.
Uh, Mr. Keith Russo, uh, the microphone is here, it should be on the podium, but...
Uh, I'm Keith Russo, I actually served on the council for two terms, um, I'm guessing back in the ninety-nine, maybe two thousand, I was trying to remember. But anyway, um, I'd be excited to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I actually chaired the committee that created the zoning, uh, for Lafayette, oh Lafayette, Bruceard, I'm sorry. Uh, actually worked on, uh, several different committees with David and, and Terry. I actually brought Walmart here, worked on that committee, worked on the, uh, actually chaired the committee for the MiGAS fire station. I was very involved, I liked doing it. Uh, I've been involved in public service since I was in eighth grade, campaigning for everything from governor, state supreme court, so... Uh, I'm excited to be back in the city of Bruceard and helping y'all, and anything I can do, uh, to help the city and the council, or any, any portion of the city, I'd be willing to help y'all. I have thirty years of management experience in operations, production, safety. Um, so, I'm here for y'all, whatever y'all need, I'd be willing to help y'all. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Keith.
Question? District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven point two, resolution number seven-three-eight dash two-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Bruceard approving mayoral appointments. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question?
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to thank all of y'all for the reappointment, I appreciate it. And to the council that had to reconsider, I appreciate y'all's vote. If I can do anything for y'all, don't hesitate to call me. I'm here to serve y'all.
Uh, same here, we're a resource.
Thank y'all.
That was the last item on our agenda, I know everybody's trying to beat the weather home, so thank you for coming, and please travel safely. Meeting adjourned.